Notice here, notice is hereby given pursuant to section five, four, nine, five, six of the California Government Code. That a special meeting of the Board of Public Utilities Commissioners of the City of Tulare is hereby called. So we will now call this meeting to order. Please stand. Let's start with a salute to our flag. I'm glad you're here to see the flag of the United States of America. And so they probably point to stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Dan Moore, we just come to you and thank you for all the many blessings you have in our community. Opportunities we have to serve and opportunities we have to help this city grow and thrive. We have the right meeting today and cover all the decisions that we.
Good man, thank you. So we have a study session that we will be going over today and. Comments at a special meeting that are limit are limited items listed on the special meeting agenda. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by the board. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five, five, nine, three, six, six, one, eight, four, nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in mute the device used for viewing the meeting. Any comments? Anyone? Nothing? Thank you. So we have one fiscal year two thousand, twenty twenty six preliminary budget review and Mr. Roberts.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Mark Roberts, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Tulare. The I and the city's budget manager Jacob Del Sid will be presenting the preliminary budget for the. City's enterprise utility funds for twenty twenty six. The fiscal year twenty six preliminary estimated surplus for the solid waste and street sweeping fund. Is approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared with a use of fund balance for the current year of five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. An improvement of one point one million dollars year to year. And I'm looking at just the bottom line for each of the of the three funds there. For wastewater, the preliminary surplus is three point one million compared to approximately six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty five. An improvement of two point four million dollars over the current year. And the estimated use of fund balance for a preliminary estimated use of fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Is one point five million dollars compared to seven point nine million one dollars last year, an improvement of six point four million dollars.
Good evening, board. I'd like to follow up with what Mr. Roberts had mentioned or gave you the brief overview of the. Surplus and use of fund balance for each of these funds. What I'd like to do is give you a little bit more detail in each fund regarding revenues, expenses and transfers out.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
On the solid waste and street sweeping, the preliminary, is that based on the new projected rates?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll start with solid waste and street sweeping. So for revenues, expected revenue for fiscal year twenty six is going to be higher than fiscal year twenty five, and that's largely driven by the increases in residential and commercial street. Commercial receipts and more regular roll offs. In regards to expenses, this goes for majority of the utility funds. It's a significant portion of these expenditure increases are due to negotiated salary increases. But they're offset by reclassifications of workers' compensation charges as those workers' compensation charges are now transfers out of the fund instead of individual department charges. And then transfers out for solid waste and streets sweeping. The reason for the decrease in the transfers out is due to pausing transfers for the solid waste CIP funds. And the the addition to the transfers out is going to be for, like I mentioned, workers' compensation charges that are now transfers out instead of charges. And also. First, technology CIP that's going out for the solid waste.
Can you explain what what does transfer out mean? I'm not sure I understand what that is.
So transfer out is going to be money that is moved from the water for, for example, sewer solid waste and street sweeping fund to other funds. So for example. For solid waste and streets, we've been transfers out can be to solid waste and streets, you being CIP. So we're moving money out of that solid waste and streets, you've been fun to the CIP solid waste and streets, you've been fun to cover CIP projects. Like I mentioned for workers' comp. We're moving money out of the solid waste and streets, you've been fun directly to the workers' comp fund to cover those charges because the bill will come out of the workers' comp fund itself. But we're still charging the solid waste in the streets who've been fun for those charges. So we're just moving money out of the solid way streets even fun directly to any other fund.
But it still stays in the, for example, solid waste, the street sweeping isn't. You know, if we're not transferring over to wastewater.
No, no, no. Well, depending on what the transfer actually is, but for example, for workers' comp, it's it's moving from. The solid waste and streets who've been fun to the workers' comp fund to pay those charges.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll move on to wastewater. So for wastewater, expected revenue is also higher and is primarily driven due to increased sewer receipts. Again, a significant portion of the expenses is due to negotiated salary increases. And again, like we're like I mentioned, reclassification of workers' compensation charges that kind of. Bounces out and transfers out for the wastewater fund. The decrease is primarily due to, again, the pausing of the wastewater CIP fund transfer that was adopted for fiscal year twenty five in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And the transfers out for wastewater primarily cover workers' compensation costs again and a transfer to the surface water management fund. For water, expected revenue for fiscal year twenty six is also higher and is primarily driven due to increased water receipts. The the expenses for water remain nearly nearly flat with only a slight increase of about forty thousand dollars. And so the large variance you see for the water transfers out, the large decrease is that in fiscal year twenty five, there was a large transfer that was adopted for about four point. I think it was four point one million dollars. That transfer is not happening this year, so it's not going to be included in the fiscal year twenty five transfers out, and it's not being budgeted for fiscal year twenty six either. So that's the reason why it's a large decrease in that transfer out, but it also covers workers' compensation costs and.
So what was the transfers out for twenty five of five point three million?
So largely it was primarily due to a four point one million dollar transfer out of water, water fund to water CIP, and that was to cover what we initially thought was a going to be a deficit in the water CIP fund.
Yes, as President, early in the budget process last year, I I was brand new and we were looking at fund balances. Which had not yet been had not yet been completed and it looked, we thought initially that we would have a significant deficit, so we had planned a transfer. I I think very little, if if not none of that money will be transferred of of that piece that that Jacob is talking about.
And it's not being budgeted for fiscal year twenty six, so that's why it's a huge, it's a large decrease for preliminary for next year. Do you have any questions?
And to to dovetail a little on what Jacob said about wastewater and water revenues. The we have moved currently and for the past at least few years, there has been not only a water, water and wastewater operating funds and CIP funds, but also reserve funds. Those funds are somewhat, those reserve funds are somewhat are basically superfluous. They're really just there to hold reserves. So we reviewed the. And perhaps the Director of Public Work can help me with the title hydrological enterprise program business. Plan or something of that nature. You're probably all familiar with it. We reviewed it to ensure that there was no reason why we couldn't move the reserves into that fund and since there and which we did. And so into the operating fund, I'm sorry. And since there was nothing preventing that to consolidate and reduce the number of funds in the city, we did so. And we will simply reflect that as a as a separate fund balance, as separate fund balances within those two funds. And they are both at, if not above their highest target amount. In fact, I had contacted Ms. Whitfield a few days ago thinking. I think we might be hitting that hundred and fifty day review because it it seemed like they actually seem like they might be a little bit high. But in discussing with Ms. Whitfield and finance staff, we determined that those balances are actually okay and they are very healthy. For the solid waste preliminarily, for the solid waste and street soothing fun, the salaries and benefits budget is four point one million dollars. Maintenance and operations expenses are estimated at eight point nine million dollars and capital outlay is estimated at five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. For a total of thirteen point five million dollars, a five point six million dollar, a thirteen point five million dollar preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six. For wastewater, salary and benefits preliminary budget total five point four point four million dollars. Maintenance and operations totals thirteen point eight million dollars and debt service totals ten point three million dollars for an overall fiscal year twenty six budget total of. Two twenty eight point four million dollars. And finally, for the water fund, the salaries and benefits total two point six million dollars, maintenance and operations eight point three million dollars. Capital outlay forty five thousand dollars, debt service one point nine million dollars for a total of twelve point nine million dollars for the water fund. Combining all municipal enterprise utility funds, salary and benefits are approximately eleven point one million dollars. Maintenance and operations expenses thirty one million dollars, capital outlay six hundred and seven thousand dollars. And debt service twelve point two million dollars for an overall fiscal year twenty six preliminary budget total of fifty four point nine million dollars.
So before we move forward, we wanted to highlight some known updates in the data that didn't make the deadline for this meeting. While these adjustments are not reflected in your agenda packet or in the data, we felt it was important to share them with you so that the board is aware. And that they will be incorporated into the next iteration of the preliminary budget that you see next. These slides outline those changes and their anticipated impact. So if you see in call in the second column, I have the preliminary use of fund balance or surplus for each fund that you that you saw in the previous slides. And thanks to public work staff for catching these adjustments that we need to make for these funds, you'll see an increase or decrease in the third column. And you'll see what the impact to the surplus or use of fund balance will be in the last column. So like I mentioned, these are not in your packet today, but they will be incorporated into the next iteration that you see at the next meeting.
And the emphasis here is is known remaining expenditure adjustments. We staff continues to define all budgets until we're bringing the proposed budget to the BPU. And and the and the city council for anything that can be adjusted or or refined. The budget is, of course, in and of itself an estimate, but we want to make sure that those are as close as we can. So we continue to work on those things. These are simply the ones that we currently know are in need of addition to the to the budget document.
And if there are any significant adjustments that need to be made, we will let the board know. All right. So so next we have, the board has already seen these preliminary projects and these funds. We just wanted to provide them for you. As information, if you had any questions that we can answer these questions for you. One thing I'd like to add is that. All the projects did go to the planning commission and they did approve that they do are in line with the city Tulare's general plan, so they've already been approved to move forward. And so like I mentioned, this is just for your information. If you have any questions about.
Yeah, I have a question. What what is, you have color coded some things. What does that mean?
So if if there's text in yellow, that just means that there are additional funding sources for that project, so it's not just water. It could be general fund or.
Okay.
Diff fund, just those are just examples. That's all it means.
And the total in yellow represents that fund's total for the portion of the project, not the overall cost of the project.
Okay.
This is page two.
Same thing for wastewater.
A lot going on in wastewater.
Next we'll touch on preliminary requested personnel and fleet. So we are requesting that a meter technician be added to the water fund and it's currently in the budget as you see it. Estimated a net cost is going to be about seventy thousand dollars to the water fund. And we also put the senior accountant slash principal accountant in this slideshow as well. Because it does affect or it is allocated to the solid waste, streets, you can find the wastewater and the water fund, but it also is allocated to the general fund too. So there are multiple funds that fund this position that we're proposing in the in the fiscal year twenty six budget.
In addition to these positions, reclassifications of various positions totaling approximately fifty four thousand dollars is not yet included in the budget. Those numbers are being finalized by the Department of Human Resources for their totals and the actual allocation, but that's fifty four thousand dollars across all utility funds. So it isn't a large amount overall.
The seventy thousand there on the water fund for the meter technician, is that with benefits?
That's fully funded.
That's total?
Fully funded.
Yes. And that is the annual cost of the fiscal year twenty six cost would likely be less than that. We generally assume three to three to four, three to six months of vacancy in a in a position, but we want to ensure that you know what the annual cost will be going forward.
And here the fleet recommendations for the water fund, they're requesting an expansion for a truck for cross connection specialists, three fourths ton with toolbox, cost is approximately about sixty five thousand dollars. Oh.
We missed a vehicle. There should also be a truck for the meter technician. They will require a vehicle as well, and I think we put that in at forty five thousand, so we'll need to make that adjustment for the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield. And so at the next steps in the in the process, as as we mentioned previously, we will continue to adjust and refine the budgets. To give you the the most accurate estimates we can before you adopt the budget at your first meeting in June. On May twentieth, we will take the fiscal year twenty twenty six, the second version of the preliminary budget to council at a workshop. On June third, we will again review the twenty twenty six preliminary budget with council. On June fifth, as Ms. Whitfield noted early, the board, we will bring the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget for adoption to the Board of Public Utilities. And on June seventeenth, we the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget adoption is scheduled. Staff will be happy to answer your questions and take any directions you'd like to provide. And I'd like to thank, before we continue, I'd like to thank Jacob for for his work in putting this information, including the presentation together for for this afternoon. Thank you, Jacob.
I got a question. Whoever wants to answer it. When I think it's on the page of like the preliminary expenditures for water funds or any of these adjustments. Looking back year to year, percentage wise, are. Are, is everything going up a certain percentage like salaries, maintenance and the different categories? Or are we seeing a higher increase on salaries? Or are we seeing a higher increase in repairs or maintenance? So is are those individual numbers all more or less staying the same percentage wise of the total budget?
Compensation, of course, I'm sure as you know, there are various elements to to compensation. There's salaries, there's pension benefits, there's health insurance.
Well, but okay, let's just forget about compensation. I'm worried more, my question is more directed at, we're always buying new vehicles as an example. So if we're buying new vehicles, are the expenditures for repairs of the current vehicles. Are they increasing consistently over and above what they should? Or is that going down because we're replacing them?
Overall, annually, the cost will go up. However, as we replace older vehicles, which generally require more maintenance with newer and more efficient vehicles. That there is savings associated with that, but if you were to look at at a graph or a chart over time, you would see that they do, they do gradually trend upward.
For the most part, most of our maintenance and operations budget stayed pretty similar to what they were this year. Think we slightly increased the cost for utilities because those continue to go up. As far as vehicle maintenance, I think it stayed about the same. Fuel prices have remained pretty high over the last couple of years, so that's pretty. If they've increased, it's been, you know, maybe two to three percent, but the most part, most of our maintenance and operations costs stayed around the same. Unless there were areas where, you know, like as we replaced these water meters, we've. Unless there were areas where, you know, like as we replaced these water meters, we've realized that some of the lids are an issue. So I think we had a little bit more money to replace more meter lids this year because we've seen that was an issue. But for the most part, our repair and maintenance budget stayed the same. Our landfill fees to the county are going up as of July one by a dollar a ton. We reflected that in a little bit of an increase in tonnage, so you'll see land fees up, landfill fees up slightly. But for the most part, most of our costs, Tim got our chlorine contract to remain the same for another year, so we've been able to hold our costs that are in contract pretty steady or the slight increase that was agreed upon. So did that answer your question?
I think where we've seen some significant increases is in staff cost, right? Over the last three and a half years, we've done a number of salary surveys which hadn't been done for a long time. And across the organization, I'm not talking about just the enterprises. You know, we had, we had twelve positions in the organization we couldn't fill, like consistently couldn't fill for a long time. And as the salaries were out of whack and we had other positions, we kept, they were, it's like a rotating door. We'd hire somebody, they would go get a little experience and go to somewhere else, get better paying job. And so when we did those salary surveys, they were, they were pretty far out of whack, a lot of them, and it was really hurting us. And at the same time, we had, we needed to fill positions. I mean, we needed to go out and get more employees for a certain position. I mean, the city is growing. I could show you, we have a a map we track for all the subdivisions that are coming in between the subdivisions that already been approved, the ones that are under construction, the one that are going through site plan right now, there there are over six thousand homes. And the state of California just released a report last week of all the cities in California, at least thirty thousand population or greater, were the tenth fastest growing city in the state. And so, you know, there's great things that come with that. I mean, there's going to be more revenue, more opportunity, but there's costs, right? And so we've got to work to continue to balance those things. And so, you know, I'm feeling better about, you know, our staffing levels. We're not quite there yet. I think if council approves this budget, I feel like we're we're. I feel like the number of staff positions, especially when we compare ourselves to surrounding jurisdictions. And when we do it on per capita basis, you know, or a budget basis. I feel like we're both on the salaries and the number of staff, we're starting to get there and we're seeing it in our recruitments. We're getting a lot more people who are applying to our recruitment and we're getting more positions, filling them and they're they're starting to stabilize out more. So I feel pretty good about that. I think we're still a year or two away from probably being right where we need to be. And then and then at that point, it's just maintaining. It's just, you know, cost of living increased, some merit increased, but not like in fire, we had to give twenty percent increases. And we had to hire twelve new fire, twelve additional firefighters. Huge, right? And so I I feel good about where we're at and where we're going. I mean, we still, you know, we still got to maintain these positions. And so we need to continue to work on our revenue streams and we're working on that. So it's a work in progress, but we had a lot of catch up to do.
I have a question. The on the debt service, is that just projects that were out on bond before? Okay, so those, I mean, for this one, it was small and the other one was nothing. The other one, it was ten million, it looked like. Do you guys feel good about the what, how the the debt service payments are? I mean, I assume some of those will come off eventually.
Yeah, they're all on the schedule, so we have a schedule of all of our revenue bonds, our sewer bonds, so we know how much exactly we're going to pay this year, this next year. We know all the way until the the bond matures, so we have a whole schedule with all that, so we make sure that those are all accounted for.
And we just had our consultant, we have a an overall city financial advisor, a certified, they that this is the highest level certification you can achieve to be an advisor to a city. And they came in and ran all our numbers because we're looking at having to build that treatment plant. And frankly, we're going to be looking at a corporation yard as well. And so they just ran the debt coverage on those and and we have the capacity to be able to handle that project with our current funding streams, which, you know, only gets a little bit better now with our new rates, right? And we have some other rates coming, so that's a good piece. Now that's really for the treatment plant. We still have the piece together, the corporate yard and some other things.
I was going through some of the numbers that we got in our packet and I won't ask too many questions, but looking at the wastewater fund. Looking through some of these numbers, for example, on the expenditures and transfers out. I noticed on salaries, they stay pretty equal for twenty five, twenty six. Maintenance and operations jump one point seven mil. Which was like a fourteen and a half percent increase. Is that pretty normal?
Sounds a little bit higher than normal. We've had some exceptional repair costs this year, so remember, we're looking at the domestic plant expansion. So we had a lot of maintenance on the industrial plant, so I think that's where our costs are, but I would have to look at it.
Yeah, because looking at the total expenditures went from twenty eight point four or twenty six point eight to twenty eight point four, and that's a six percent increase, which, you know, that's the 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 maintenance and operations took most of that, if not all of it.
Yes.
Revenues did go up thirteen percent, so. Okay.
Yeah, so there's a higher cost to treat when you bring in, you're bringing in the loadings.
Anyone else have any other questions, comments?
This for Trish. I don't know if this is really a question you can answer, but, you know, when we build out this new facility with the bond money, hopefully, will that, will that make the city more efficient cost wise at the end of the day? Or do you see any cost savings by doing this expansion? Or is it just more just for capacity?
Really more for capacity. Remember, we'll have to go to electric vehicles too, so we're going to have to put that infrastructure in. Either way, we'll see if that saves us money on the fuel cost versus electricity. I haven't gotten there with that analysis yet. But I don't know how much efficiency we'll save. Depends on where we go, right? We go in the middle of town, which is highly unlikely. We could probably save some fuel costs. More than likely, we'll end up on the outskirts somewhere similar where we are right now. So I don't know if we'll save a whole lot. It's just, you've seen the our current yard. So really, it's just getting us a new yard, you know, updating it and providing capacity for for our future.
One other question on the wastewater CIP fund. Looking at our capital improvements done on expenditures and transfers out, the seven point one three million, is that our wastewater that we're working on or is that what we?
Yes, that's the wastewater projects that are programmed for next fiscal year. So all those projects that Jacob showed you on the two or three slides, when you total that, it's about seven million for next year, total cost for all those projects.
Okay, and that's something we've, we've approved through the board already, right?
The board has seen it. You will approve the CIP when you adopt, you'll adopt the CIP when you adopt the budget.
Okay.
So if you have any questions about any projects or anything on the budget while you're reviewing it between now and the next meeting, don't hesitate to reach out to me if you would like to meet to go through it. I'd be more than happy.
Okay.
And some of those projects you'll see as they come back for contract approval or.
Yeah, you'll see a big majority of them, even the equipment purchases, a lot of them are over a hundred thousand, so are over fifty, so the board will be seeing those.
Okay, anything else? Anyone? Okay, well, I guess if there's nothing to come before the board. Our next meeting will be June fifth. So with it. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.